There wasn't. All right. Okay, I'd like to to call this meeting to order the agenda of the, sorry, the committee of the whole community development meeting on May first twenty twenty six thirty P M. I need an approval of the agenda, looking for a move by Councilor Wendy Slail and seconded by Councilor Joe Martell. All right, all in favor? Okay, excellent. Okay, for disclosure of pecuniary interests in the general nature thereof, do I have anybody who has any interest?
I'm a founding member of the Seaway Horticultural Society and as part of the group that will present be presented under delegation set presentation with Mr. Hayden McCallum and Mr. Paul.
Okay, thank you. And so you have to step away from the table. All right, thank you very much. Okay, question number four, pardon me, is this arising from previous meeting minutes? Is there anything from the previous minutes? All right, okay, well, that then we can we can jump into delegations and presentations. So the first one, Mrs. Ms. Jane Hess, Community Impact Officer, congratulations. You can stand back there if you want or wherever, you don't need to be on camera.
Right. Thank you for the feedback. And I mean, it's been a busy year for a community with et cetera, so it's great to finally get in front of you to present what we're doing. As mentioned, my name is Jane Hess, Steel Laker. I was a public health nurse and director of nursing, chief nursing officer at the Leam Temple for a long time. I was there for thirty years, I wasn't in those positions for all that time. And so I'm going to be reunited way and I would love a powerful representation that's that's out there. It's in PDF format, so how well is it available? Yeah, so it does look good as well in PDF format, it's helping to show up in the in the public form. But what United Way is looking at is the, you know, the call we hear in United Way with our in Leam Temple raises that involves many programs in all municipalities. It's looking at a way to use that money in a different way so that we can have a more meaningful impact, maybe over the longer term. And where this connects well with my job at the health unit, because I was involved with health equity and social determinants of health, is that now even way, while it's all funded programs that support that, girls aid, big brothers, big sisters, seniors programs, et cetera, is now being used in the language of health equity and social determinants of health. And I've done a lot of consultations, because I've hired as a community impact officer to do the community conversation project. And the way I described health equity to a group of kids at Stingers in Brockville was, I said, you know what health equity is? And they said equal, and I said, no, equally, you get a half a donor and you get a half a donor. Equity is that you get three quarters and you get a quarter. So it's that kind of thing, how we're looking at how we use the money for United Way. We're using the collective impact framework, and there is interpackage, a logic model with the collective impact framework, looking at the components that that create that collective impact within the community. Common agenda, we're all looking towards the same outcome. Shared measurement, so that we're all measuring the same things. I'm sure many of you in your regular job or your business know that you have to report to certain governments or certain people, and these are the things you report. And those numbers don't always match the numbers of the other person you're working with in the other ministry. So when we talk about shared measurements, we're thinking, okay, what could we choose as least in least rental that would get all worked through? Yeah, we still have to do all the reporting, we don't have to do that. But what could we all be working toward that we all say, when we got there, yes, we got there, kind of thing? And that's what shared measurement is, mutually reinforcing activities. So a lot of the things that would be funded would be building on one another to support us towards those common goals or those shared shared objectives. And continuous communication, so everyone knows what's going on all the time. Because I'm going to be a community and somebody said, so and so is doing this program. They're doing that program, I know that somebody's overdoing this program. And so how that, sometimes, I'm sure, as we've spoken past, I've heard of that. That somebody's doing something, somebody else said, great idea, starts it up again, and they're working either against each other or they're both doing the same thing going forward. So it's to try to get that continuous communication so we can all have that common agenda and working on the shared goals. And so what the United Way proposes in this, because they're paying you, there's only to do this, I'm not fundraising with United Way, so I'm not off the side of my desk as the person who's already working. Is that we will provide the backbone for whatever project we look at working on in these incredible. That could be a project that would be something for all of Leam's rental. There's a program in Windsor Essex called Cradle to Prayer, Prosper Us, where they have the privilege, if you call it that, not of having the highest health poverty rates in Canada. So they picked three neighborhoods, two Windsor, one Leanington, and embedded programs for grades six, seven, and eight with the common outcome of high school graduation with polydendrites. So we're not talking about a project that's sort of a year in the making, we're talking about something that's fifty five or ten in the making to see if they can change the trajectory of those families in the town of Windsor Essex. I'm not saying that's what we would choose here, but that's an example of how United Way has put the focus from fundraising to community development with fundraising to support it. And that's kind of what we're calling, I hope that makes sense to you. So I've been out talking, you can have a look at all of the leagues that I've had through it, leagues in Bramble. I was here Wednesday with Edinburgh Cardinal Presspot and Augusta at a community conversation that we invited people to. We had six people that came to that meeting. So the ones that we've invited people to have been very, have had very degrees of success. We had twenty five in Westport, but Robin Jones tied that to her mayor's breakfast. We had fifteen in the other, not just because the people in there that chose to come, no one kind of did any work, but I mean, we did through United Way. We've had a couple where no one showed up. But we have been very successful in existing groups like Stingers, like Team Medical Wild, like the American Children's Kids the other night. So we probably talked to about fifty or seventy five kids. So we tried to get all age groups to say, what are the strengths, what are the challenges, and what do you want for the future of your community? And so we're going to pull that together in a report, which will probably be available to municipalities and the general population in September. And then think about when we do our our fundraising for United Way and we put out our R and Ps for future future projects, what will that look like? And might it might not be, you know, ten or fifteen little projects, it might be something bigger. Also, if there's something local that's a real need in a community, we could support a community champion in, say, Edinburgh Cardinal that wants to move forward with this project. When I was an elegant on Friday, there was a group of people there that wanted to have almost like an Earth Day committee all the time. And so when you think about environmentalists, support kids and youth, and and looking after the community, all those positive things that could fit into United Way pillars, and we can support a champion and an elephant who wanted to use some local fundraising, we could we could support them with text receipts, with those kinds of things, because some of those organizations don't have charity status. So those are some of the kind of things that we're talking about. We did do a survey in the fall, and Edward for Cardinal, amazing, of two hundred eighty seven surveys that went out, looking back, he had eighty nine for Edward for Cardinal, so we must have had a champion, and Edward for Cardinal said, build a survey, build a survey, or somebody put in eighty nine. And we asked again in that, what are the, what are your strengths, what are your challenges? And what came back for Edward for Cardinal, the three top challenges is order work housing, mental health, food insecurity. And the strengths were caring, caring and unified community, quiet, safe, walk from recreational opportunities. And they thought the priority challenge was housing. So, you know, a million dollars at Nine Way Raises for Leam's incredible family is a bit of a top, housing, mental health, food insecurity. But are there some things that underlie us that we could maybe work on over the long term in order to make change in any community? One example is that the fluoride orange program at the health unit, where we put fluoride orange on top of our team, saves one dollar on that, saves seven dollars by the age of five, if they go eat a general anesthetic and their teeth removed because they're rotten. So, you know, so there are lots of things that are short term gains like that, but what we're looking at is a little bit more long term. But it's that concept of investing early to save money later. Yeah, everything I just wanted to mention tonight, I think I'm just a bit of a finish my pen notes.
You've got three minutes left, you've got lots of time still.
And then along the, everything in our community coalition and following with survey providers who we credit all, and we want the accessibility, I think we put it in place, we kind of risked a couple of years of COVID. But people in your community, they can be in a work position, a volunteer position, who do something for this work for you. One year it was the McCallums and Presspot, one year it was that, I don't know whether it was in a law class, but though overly known for us was in Brockville, they were nominated because the classroom was so friendly to the students at St. Mary's. So for me, anybody, anywhere, and I left these on the back counter, if you can think of people, we've extended the deadline to the tenth of May so that we get people ready for us. Any questions?
I'm sure there will be some. All right, maybe I'll start with you, Kim, do you have anything?
Well, I was just looking at examples of things that you've done, the public health assessment and surveillance reports. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, you're on the, we started the White Art District Health Unit website, hunter of other reports, and they do a number of different reports. Now, they haven't done as many through COVID because all of the reporting we did through the last three or four years is fully related.
Right.
But they have one on teen pregnancies, they have one on people using fruits and vegetables, so there's a whole lot of reports that are there. That, and so it's when I talk about the data that we use to look at all of these rental, that's the data. The Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan that was done by Robin Jones and Nancy Pecker in the last year, that will be data that will be used as we, how we look at that basis, we presented that to counties for services at counties one time, and this is in the adverse childhood experience survey. So it's looking at those things that happen in homes in our communities that have an impact on kids, so that would be considered. And then this year, they're really going, they're going to lead you the early development instrument that's going to be found through the counties through the early years. On that, look at different areas of development in kids in the universe. And so we're going to do that, because we'll have new updated data for that, and then also this should ever be due in three, six, and nine testing. So those are, those are, you know, generic population based data on what's happening in our community.
And and have you ever done a survey finding out the amount of people who actually have a family doctor, lack of family doctors in the community, and how that's impacted the health involved?
I don't know if we've ever done a survey, but hopefully that has done a survey, that would be something the interior health team would have as data, because they're working on the primary care focus, so the Leam's incredible family health team, but that's certainly an issue. And when I did a lot of conversations, particularly with young families, in Brockville, like the nine or ten months of the library with babies of the nine that were their own parents, I think eight of those were new to Brockville in the last year. And primary care physician or nurse practitioner was their top problem as well as the, as they care. So demographically, I've tried to get all groups to buy the conversations, but what I've missed is parents of kids in that seven to eleven, seven to twelve range. So trying to figure out how, so some of those, they're very busy people. It's all lots of going into the arena, that or friend, or if you're in a conversation, they're, they're talking. Yeah, we're trying to talk about these, so we're going to look at that as well. But yes, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
And I told these moms, you know, keep your family doctor at your wealth home and sound good under the day. And then go to the health unit and get your child to United States. And you can get them never better than that.
So they're maintaining their family because they're from where they're coming from, because there isn't enough here.
Yeah, it's better to have one virtually than not one of them.
Not one of them.
And that's, that's not why, you know, there's health unit opinion, that's my, there's more change that we keep hanging on what's we don't have. And that's probably this, this is the interior government issue. That's a problem with interior government, because they already have a decision, you have to give up the one you got on their website. And that's, that's an issue, if there's any info, if there's anybody in the provincial government.
Well.
Any other?
Jane, I just have one comment. I was going to actually, before I came after the question, I was going to ask you about housing. I think I was, should be on the top of everyone's agenda right now, I don't know if you watch, if anyone watches the newsletter, what's been happening down east where families have been put up in hotels, hotels, by the by the province, and now the hotel keepers are going to evict them all, some by the tenth of May and some by the end of June, and no place for them to go at all. So I was going to suggest you talk to the counties, but when you were talking to Ken, you said you've already been talking to the counties. Because the counties are the ones that handle the housing in Leam's incredible. And from everything that I've seen on the town, on the television lately, the counties have got a whack of money for housing this year. Don't know if you guys all watch the news, but Ottawa got a big cut in their funding, but the United Counties got a big increase in their funding. So you might want to just try to get a, try to get another audience with the.
I have a couple of calls to do that. And, you know, certainly housing doesn't allow, housing is up on the economic development issue too, when I talk to AP, six hundred jobs in Leam, they can't fill it because people have moved here. And so, you know, so it's a, it's an issue on so many fronts. Housing for people who are are homeless or need supporting housing is an issue too, because you can't just put them into an apartment. All of a sudden, you're, you're beautiful, they need those supports. And back to COVID, when we have that isolation place at the motel on Kent Boulevard, you know, there were things in it that people didn't like, and people kind of say negative things about it. But there were a lot of people there that are near house that were supported because there was somebody around almost twenty four seven to help them in their challenges and their needs. And so, you know, and so there's a whole lot of issues around housing, and some of it's related to homelessness, and then the challenges that go along with that, health addictions, and how to help people live together and the supports they need, and then just to visit the stuff. But there's, there's, it's a monkey petted tiger, for sure.
There is, and the township can also be of a help for the housing issues too, because people have to have lots to build on. And the township is the one that can create those lots in the town.
And and are all of you are gentsers?
I'm not a gentser.
No, that, that is part of the per view of that, but you're seeing about people living in hotels and motels, though. Like, twenty years ago, we were visiting people living in hotels.
Yeah.
Because, not necessarily in this jurisdiction, but in other jurisdictions, because that was the only house that they had. You know, so we visited the main, and you know, just, you know.
I don't, I just, just wanted to say things, Sis, for for your presentation, it's great to to hear the work and and understand the role, you know, for you as a community and back officer. I don't really have any questions, I know a lot of what we're discussing is is probably at a different level of government than than the one we're sitting at. But it's great that that we're here to hear, you know, the work that United Way does, so that, you know, when there is an ask, that, that, you know, we understand the ask and we can explore about those.
And something we will change over time, our state, for sure. And part of the reason we did this now is because is it different because of COVID? When we're pre-COVID, we're, you know, it's not done, we're, we're working through, and definitely it's a different time. And there, there are many more challenges even now than there were prior to COVID.
Absolutely, there's, it exposed, it exposed a lot of our.
Our variable and more, more.
Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have one, not a question, you said that we had three issues here according to our survey, we met people, it was, housing, mental health, and what was the third one?
Food insecurity. Food insecurity.
Food insecurity.
And so food insecurity is going to kind of like a development, you know, the way because it isn't just putting food in people's mouths, it's helping them figure out how to grow, it's sustaining it. You know, there's many variables to food security, and it isn't just putting money, food in food banks that people go get. You know, teaching people how to cook, my daughter's public health nurse is a hero, she visited a girl the other day, a new mother, and she has had no woman. And she had no way to make baby food for this, you know, I think it was eighteen month, but we're still only on the bottom kind of thing, so, you know, just some of those kind of things depending on the kind of food security that they thought.
Interesting, yeah, very interesting, thank you.
Thanks, Miss Slail.
Good presentation, thank you.
I, I guess all I had is, is, you know, I, I like the idea of you acting as, as, for lack of a better way, as a project manager for some of these initiatives. I think that's a great approach, because, you know, so many times we see it in government, I see it at work all the time as well, where, you know, everybody seems to be trying to do the same goals and and marching in different directions and and they're not, they're not being cohesive about it anymore.
And I've been involved in finding, like, we used to get the people current work funds. And, you know, that's a reach in our community, and one time we had people apply, we did two same applications from our credit. They didn't really know the other one, they're doing the same thing, so, you know, it's very hard, we'll just kind of, hey, have you talked to each other? You're kind of doing the same thing, and and that's what we're doing, we're going to do. And the other thing we're trying to, we're really trying to do is, we do lots of studies, studies, and surveys and reports, and maybe go anywhere. And we're going to be sure this was.
Studies and studies, don't, studies and reports aren't going anywhere, you're saying?
Lots of times you can do, but really go on a shelf and then go out the back.
Oh, hey, I agree with you. You're, you're, I have, I do agree.
I know that for coming here. So we're going to try and think that, you know, now, you know, I'm finding, you know, three days a week, six months at a time, so you never know, someone will say, okay, we don't have that job. It does make sense to do this.
Sounds good, and and like I said, hopefully you can get the word out, and if you do learn the secret, let us know too, because we could really use some, some good advice on that, in some cases.
I think the county's capital toy services, when they presented the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, this was the previous councils, and they wanted to hire a need to help put the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan they do into action. Because that's another report that I think individuals and municipalities are taking forward, I mean, Mark Fanci's working on it for the, for the young one. But that's one that, you know, needs some action, so hopefully through this, we can action this follow up.
Thank you very much.
Again, I'm going to not say the rest.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, Jane. Thank you very much. All right, so that would conclude it, it seems like we had some good questions that lead into the next one, actually. So I'd like to welcome Mr. David Macalpin and Mr. Paul Whitney here to talk about a request for community and town support for a community garden at twenty one, twenty one forty Dunn Desk.
So that has some experience on stage.
I thought you might.
Do you say that, because I'm here speaking on behalf of the delegation, you know, of the Presbyterian Church, your law, of which I am trusting for them. But we're also still the owners of twenty one forty Dunn Desk, that have not been finalized yet. Also speaking on the, of the African Brown Society, represented by Paul Whitney, and the Seaway and probably this Horticultural Society. And our aim is to create, it's a community garden on the southwest property corner of twenty one forty Dunn Desk, known as St. Andrews, St. James Presbyterian Church. We're here this evening to ask for the support and participation also to to help us get going with this or continue on with this. Food insecurity is a major, major issue, and it's not going away anytime soon. Food banks have seen an increase in their usage by over sixty percent. They are projecting that twenty percent of the population of that issue will be making use of food banks. And when you start bringing that down to the local level, that means of the seven thousand people in Edinburgh Cardinal, fourteen hundred people will be making use of food banks. Now, we're not naive enough to believe that one community garden will solve everybody's problems for the course of your people. However, as was alluded to, by teaching people how to grow, how to grow, how to preserve. And with the produce going to the food bank, you can take a big step towards helping more where we can, when we can, and I think that that's the important thing. So what we are hoping is that council would be willing to provide some, I'd say, possible, certainly, dirt of a level of that southwest corner of the property, and get it smoothed out, and then once the boss is placed, which should go down between the bosses who act as a mulch, things that are growing up would eventually break down as progress. So that's what we're here for today. I don't have much more that I have to say about this side, and so I wonder, are there any questions?
Thank you very much, all right. Councilor Martell, do you have any? Okay.
Let's just say I have a couple of questions, you said you're going to try to teach people how to plan and grow. So how are you going to be, like, post that at the food banks to help, like, you have to come there to your, it's like the, the days that.
It's a combination, I mean, there are people that are definitely interested in gardening, and they know how to do it. So we've got the expertise, we've got people who don't know the first thing about growing. Last year in your law at Riverview Presbyterian Church, we started a community garden with Alliance Fund, and phenomenally, we got there in Boston, like, four way, and with that, you were able to provide three hundred and fifty pounds of food to the food bank. We had some help from the high school students and Seaway, and one of the students, when she held the weed seeds in her basement, she commented, these are so much. And my thought was, you haven't seen it here, it's new. So there is a lack of knowledge about where food comes from. How to grow it yourself, so that by getting people involved, those that know, those that don't know, but want to learn, people bring them together. One can learn from the other, and yes, they will help with the community garden, and thus provide the food bank with products. But at the same time, they're going to learn things, things that they can do with food, put a little garden, whether it's tomatoes, carrots, or these potatoes. And there are these things that, you know, tomatoes are, they, they write them, they want. Caters beats carrots. Squash, those are things that you can go and you can put away for winter. Oh, I grew, it was twenty twenty five squash, I'm still eating them, but mowing the perch, and I'm not complaining. So that's something that people can do. Multiple generations have lost the know-how of how to do this. So by getting this garden, by getting the experts in, by bringing people in, by people being able to talk and build community, which is another big aspect. People in our, that, a community, not real community. And by having it on that tournament, it'll be incentive garden on the, on the other side of the highway as much. But a lot of people were just locked down in that, and there it is, as opposed to being willing to cross the line. Where the community garden was before, eight, nine years ago. You know, as an outreach from a church and perspective, this is part of, from what happened in Brown's company does, this is what they do from the Horticultural Society. From the horticultural society. Plants, vegetables, seeds, seedlings, how to manage, how to grow them. This is what they do. So the combination of all these, these three groups. The knowledge will be there. The people will be strong. And the volunteers. We did have a horticultural meeting on Saturday. There was, I'm going to say twenty five people. In attendance, which we had no idea what it had. And there were seven or eight. In growing and. Well, we can't, we're not going down, but. Those quality. They have stuffs, they have friends. That people have been calling and emailing and saying, couldn't make it, but I'm interested. We're going to get volunteers. So I don't know, does that answer?
Yeah, that's really good. I have another question for you. I was reading it and apparently we're gonna have a fellow bees or something. Like, are you?
I assume it is to have some hots on location, which certainly for the garden. Would help with pollination. But it will also help the pollination of the flowers that are throughout the area. I think there is a desire to find something home, such as some flower seeds. That you can grow again. One eats off the other, literally and figuratively. Um, and so, having the bees there. People putting gardens into their own homes after what are you about to do? They'll be there. It'll help. It's, it's all community connected.
Thank you. Yes, Martel, the question.
So I noticed that you had to ask here for the, for the soil and the work. I am going to assume there's a timeline on that. Do you first of May, you want to have this turned in the next five weeks?
The um. What has been said to me is that we're not going to rush it. This, we're going to do it right. Uh, last year in Europe, we didn't get our boxes into mid to late July. So we got started. And even with that. We we still agree with a lot of substantial amount of food. So I I'm not going to say it's going to be mid to late July when we get this in. Certainly, it's sooner the better. Um, I'm not. What is available, the way of what we're asking for, I don't know. What it would take. Have that brought in? I don't know. I can't say that, well, I want to by the end of next week, and it has to all be done. So we can plan a long weekend, maybe. Um, I think this is a conversation that needs. And again, it, you know, just the bronze, African bronze, our cultural society, our river view. Our problem, I think that's something that needs to happen with chemistry. If expectations are not complicated, people are going to be disappointed. So, no, I guess. I don't know, I'm sure that the best way to do that is, but it needs to be that.
So let me rephrase my question. Ideally, when would you? Would I ever start?
I would say probably within three weeks. I mean, that would take it up for a long weekend. And that's not suggesting that. Uh, you know, if it goes to the end of May. No big loss. Kansas already would not be planting long, long again in the end, but so, you know, I don't know. Three to five weeks, six weeks. I'm not, I'm not sure what it would take, but um. Whatever works. For all parties involved. Like if you were to come back and say, well, we can get it in a month and a half. And. I mean, if that's what you can do, that's what you can do. Does that help?
Thank you. I think you might be on the wrong side.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dillawine.
No, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a whole pile. Yeah. And I, and I apologize. I'm going to go down a different route though. Um, so, so I absolutely, before I began, I I, you know, to you, to Dave and Paul, I talked to you guys ahead of the meeting, but. Um, hundred percent in support of a community garden. Right? There's not a bit of doubt that there's an enormous need. There's food insecurity. There is, like you said, an educational component for, well, it's, it's, it's a lost, it's certainly lost. I mean, we, we love doing our raised beds at home. We, we do lots of, lots of gardening at home and we're fortunate enough to have the space. Uh, and the availability to do it. So my questions. You know, it's a church property with a cemetery, it's zoned, it's zoned a cemetery. To the best of my knowledge, the entire. Uh, lot is zoned for, for that, even, even the space the building's on. And um. From a, a human being standpoint, um, I know we've had, you know, Paul present in the past with G P R and. And we, the thought process is that there are no graves there. Right. Um, but, you know, speaking with elderly folks that were here with the building of the Seaway and, you know, that certainly is the. Discussion is that it's been moved, it's zoned for a cemetery. So for me to support building community gardens on what could be someone's grave is an absolute non-starter. So. Um, are you locked into that location?
It is our preferred choice at this point. And the G B R I, I know. Why begins, the Department of Government, the Consumer Services has determined that it's all cemetery. Regardless of the fact at this point that we have maps showing where everybody's body. And they are nowhere near the area where. That. The actions required to. You think are ongoing. And um, the Department of Government, Consumer Services. Are the only ones who can make that change from institutional. To either or show or residential. And um. That's where that stands right now.
Yeah. So, so again, I'll go back to, you know, as long as it's, as long as it's still zoned as a cemetery. Uh, for me, until you have that approval from, from them to do anything in other than have a cemetery there. And I, and I know. We said, let's start bearing bodies, you know, but um. The, the reality for me is, the reality for me is if it's a cemetery, it's not appropriate to be building things on top of it until it's no longer deemed a cemetery.
So just, just to clarify, if I, if that. If it is cemetery, then it is institutional. And therefore should not be subject to any taxation whatsoever. Because right now, that's not the case.
The, and, and we're, that's something that's a different discussion for me. We're here to talk about community gardens. I'm happy to have a taxation discussion. Uh, later, uh, if that's the, if that's the intention, I know, I know, we're here for community gardens. But. The reality for me in a community garden in that location is that it's not a perfect location. So. Um, you know, I would like to solve that problem. I mean, and you mentioned before that you wanted it on Dunn Street and yes. Um, I'm not sure in my mind that that's possible, but in the past, it has been where the library is. Um, you know, the idea is, and you'll hear it later on about, um, part of the monarch. Butterfly rehab program is that we're going to do a good portion of that, that library. Uh, lawn as, as wildflowers, which I think you're proposing in this as well. Um, there's certainly a collaborative possibility there. Uh, it's been a community garden in the past in that location, but it's been watered there. There's water available there to water them and, and it works within, you know, the sunflower idea as well as the um. Uh, and in a highly visible place as well. So that's why I asked if you're locked to the location, certainly supportive of the project, just not the location.
I think, I think it was a block that certainly are preferences. There specifically because it is on the island. One plus term. Um, where it is, you know, all the housing in there. And so it's. In my mind, maybe a lot, maybe somebody else thinks they're like, it's much easier for people to get to there. From within the confines, you know, from the river, up east weather in. Um, than needing to go across. The highway. Is it a deal breaker? I don't know about that. But certainly the purpose is to start there. And I have no doubt that it will be successful. And with the library as another option as well. Expansion down the road. Would also. Likely taken for down to use of any. Area that might be available, including the water.
Well, I, I, you know, again, and, and I don't want to debate with you, but I, I just, you know, the library is, is, you know, very well used. So I don't think people have a problem finding our library. Although it is also under our food. Yes, right. So. The logic to me is that, you know, if you're trying to educate folks that are food insecure, that are using the food bank. Wouldn't it be logical that the growing area is part of that, that exact same lot? I just, I struggle with, I just struggle with the cemetery. And I, you know, well, not struggle, I just, I, I will, you know, I'm not going to make any bones about it until you have that piece of paper. I would not, would not allow that to use, or I would vote against that. Um, but I certainly am highly supportive of a community garden. I think that there is a location that's available to you. You want to get your volunteers on board and do the location there. I'd be there to help you build the boxes. So. Um, the last, I did have one other question too as well, and we do have a community grants and donations program. We do have a community grants and donations program. Okay. Um, we, we did, you know, a considerable amount of work. Uh, a couple of meetings ago. I'm not sure it's the exact date. Uh, there was a deadline that passed and we did deny. You know, we did deny folks because they didn't have their applications in for any kind and for financial aid. They didn't fulfill the requirements of the application. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the program.
I know that what we ran into Europe while last year was the exact same thing. Yeah. Um, and, and honestly. We weren't expecting financial because we knew whatever deadlines that might have been, there, we've blown by.
Yes.
The hope for was that the economy is not running. So. It's something that might be more easily obtained than, than, you know. Even though somebody may have money in pockets, whatever the case may be, but uh, pile of dirt over here. Or this wood chipper over here, nothing's going to happen. The patch is going to go to landfill and burn. That's what you're hoping.
Yeah, good. Thanks. I appreciate it. I guess, right? I don't have questions. Okay, um, I, I actually, I'm glad that we went that direction because it was the same that I had, I was first where the things go. Um. So, and I like the idea of the garden as well. I support the garden. The garden sounds great to me. Um. Uh, and I like the idea of teaching people, you know, as well. I mean, I think that, that's, that's a really important thing. And then, uh, you know, as somebody who learned how to garden, I don't know. Uh, the spring of twenty nineteen, I think roughly was about, yes. Uh, and I mean, you know, I mean, I had three hundred pounds of potatoes alone downstairs in my. And then incidentally, that does not last as long as you can eat it quickly enough. So anyways, but yeah, I should have shared it. Um, so, so I mean, I, I think I'm, like I said, I'm in favor of this idea. We just got to figure out, it's a million of the candidates, uh, to the mayor's point and everyone else's point and, uh. Uh, I'd love to have a further discussion with some.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And I know you touched on it early on and it's funny how it almost seems like things lead into each other, but uh, we'll now move on to the number six. Um, action information and discussion items. Uh, and in the live, we have an action and we talked about cannabis moments ago and uh, here we are entering into the conversation now. Uh, with regards to the site plan control agreement of thirty two oh nine County Road Number Two, H B Holdings, Inc. If uh, the C D C, we still kind of introduce this to the topic, that'd be great.
This is your view of site and program for thirty two oh nine, number two. The property is on the south side of the primary two and it's uh, that's going to be in the area. The application for recently was approved on the schedule by Uncle in summer twenty twenty two. The land is all business for industrial as well as for current against the rest of the capability. Um, there's been a small undertaking plan with the recent engineering, um, that was included as part of the voting that application. Conservation of early notes, um, in their review of that report, the importance of seven and more control measures. They recommend that sign in hand based in fact that the proposed man speaking of all the water. And they identify the elements of our infrastructure will require conservation authority. The site is previously serviced with a private well, insured and adjacent property and then new wells installed on property. And the private biological and free analysis, um, provides a very sufficient water flow in the property service site. Uh, a subject program was issued twenty twenty by the health unit. Uh, unfortunately, it inspired before the investigation on Florida to the conservation for the city. Will be needed from the conservation department. And um, they have a good history on the site. It will be a tertiary system. So it's also included. And the agreement that's in the agenda package. There was a plan for, we can verify everything, there's only a limit. Um, and they didn't give it that the proposed development is going to include all the structures to buy and use. We shouldn't send the make of things of the building facilities. Uh, the most valuable going to be on site, you can think within the building. Um, so the proposed agreement is in the agenda package. Um, on policy, council facility, if we're deciding for progress to the C A O, that is required by the C N. The C A O requires a permission by approval that the applicant is going to agree with the project, requiring the works provided on the site plan. Um, section forty one of the planning allows that, um, a certain name can be registered against a limited class, but that's, that's, um, the only thing that's first of all. So the uh, the agreement that's in the agenda package, uh, as, as the, I think that the everyone often sees the word and support down the highway.
Great. Thank you very much. And this, this one is, for at least three of us on the table, there's not, that's not a new issue within that. Uh, we've seen at least twice before, I believe, but before, so, uh. Uh, welcome back. I guess it should be the short, short statement there. Um, all right. Any questions I can do with you, Kim, or? Yeah, and I can talk all day on this one.
And me too.
Um, uh, and, and I find that. You know, I, I did send some questions through, through the staff in advance, just because I'm frustrated with, with the hurdles that appear to be. You know, lay down in, in, in this case. And I know. Um, there's, so just to stop. So the reason that there's all of the extra that this has to go through. Through is simply because in our bylaw, it doesn't say that we have processing as, as part of a cannabis facility. Am I correct in thinking that?
The chair, that is the reason for zoning by law.
So. Right. So we can grow it. We recognize that it can, that can be for growth because it's considered underlight industrial. But it's the processing of it that isn't recognized in our bylaw. So they, they can't process. Am I, am I correct? In that thinking? You know, wouldn't need a zoning bylaw change if it was just a, just to grow, but you're, you're going to process. So there needs to be a change.
Okay, so, maybe I'm wrong here, I I was thinking, and my thoughts is that cannabis facility. Is considered light industrial. When we start to process it, it changes the zoning and it needs a different setup. Am I wrong, you can correct me, I don't mind being wrong. It's just that's where my misunderstanding is, because I thought we changed it to allow growth facilities within light industrial. But that, the difference was we didn't allow processing, packaging, or or retail sale of it. Uh, he can't contribute, yes, sir. So, just so that I understand that perfectly, growth as well as processing or? Not processing, that doesn't apply to this, though, because it's industrial. So in my mind, in our zoning bylaw for industrial, we included growth, like indoor growth. As as that, so we've never put that in. And it's under agricultural landsowners, not. Now I'm even further behind, so. So that says our zoning bylaws say that it's allowed?
That's the definition.
But it's not an allowable use under commercial. So that helps clear, that helps clear that up a little bit, it was put in for outdoor agricultural zones. But not indoor industrial. On industrials, okay, okay, so that that clears. So that clears that up, sort of, it's something that we need, it's something that we'll see come forward again, because I struggle with this, but. Um, and and I guess, again, because of the the. I mean, that building's been there forever, at one time it was a car lot, I'm trying to help out. And and now we're actually, there's no changes, as I read, in any of their. Applications, that they're gonna change the footprint of it, of that building. Uh, at all, and and they have to go through. Like erosion, settlement, like all these. So unless, unless there are, the only reason that it's a study that's required, though, like, if I wanted to put a car dealership back in there, it wouldn't have to be that study. Okay, and and I, and I understand that it's a heck of a lot easier to do that than it is to do it fully, right? So, so I understand why it's there, like, to avoid that from one step, but, but I, you know, I'm struggling with why. Why at all, you know, but if it is, it is, the last, the last question for me is, I read through Eastern Indian hearing's report. It says in their report that there is. Um, a new septic built onsite. So. So, but we're requiring to do another septic. Again, now, so, just so that I understand exactly. Why that's happened, like, I understand there's been a change of approval authority, but. Like, was there not a plan in place that they took it, the health unit?
Good chair, and and I just. The health unit issue, uh, for the massive system, uh, and, uh. I know there's a lot of those things installed on the site.
So, the one that was built with the health unit. Design. They built something different, different, or it didn't match? Cause, so, I'm struggling with, that one was okay then, but now it's not okay, they have to do a totally different style of system.
Uh, there, the health unit, the permit is.
Yeah, uh, I think I. Apologize if I felt like I was hammering you there, I wasn't, I'm just frustrated with this, it's been a long time. Wanna see something happen there.
Um, no, but I, when I, um. I mean, I'm, I'm just like, with the mayor, I guess, so, all these. All these, uh. Like Plan C one, C two, and three, four, I mean, I guess, you're saying that some of it has to be done because of, uh. You know, the county's, uh. So it's done, they did it all, everything's ready, we have a recommendation, man, I'll move that recommendation.
All right, uh, do I have a second, by the way, we're, we're moving on, is that the committee, uh, recommended that, they recommend. Council and treaty agreement with the owner of thirty two oh nine Kelly Road number two as. Yes, so thank you very much, okay, uh, all in favor? Right, here we go. Sorry to make you guys, uh, spread it out so long, but, uh. There we are, congratulations, but we just may wanna, like. The developer coordinator pointed out that they, um, earned a lot of interest. You know, during this, this discussion, it's not delegation, but they're free to ask questions. Yeah, so, so, uh, I mean, obviously, we can't ask questions during this part of it, but if you do wanna stay around, uh, until question period, which is probably. And a few more related down the agenda, we can certainly answer his questions if you'd like. All right. All right, uh, okay, so moving on then to number six B, uh, an action, uh, which is an amendment to the fence by law. Uh, again, to the, uh, to the community development chair, or, or maybe, you can be chair, everyone.
The fine time file is not allowed to be, um, given an exception to those provisions. So, of of the provision, we'll see the same as what was in our previous zoning by law, that's. Um, it's separate from the zoning by law, and so our plenty of tools that we rely on to be accepted by the zoning by law and for a main experience, same can be applied here. Um. Um, the request for invention would include, um, a site name, show the close location of the fence, a survey to confirm regarding line. And certain events, uh, including material style and price. Um, Sapporo is that a commerce media included application, you could circulate, uh, notice of. Uh, notice to the owner of the property giving a vetting consent, and after a period of at least twenty days, that would bring the request to the community development. Um, Sapporo sent that authority to grant that defense by law, delegate it to the committee, which seems a little bit of a time instead of going to council. Also, as we mentioned in the by law, um.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions, council member? Um, so be that chair, uh, yeah, maybe I need to get the heck out of this chair. Okay, so, probably two questions, I think, um. Uh, and I'll leave it for for the item that we're talking about, I have one that maybe is another, another change too, um, so. A misunderstanding, the only thing I'm misunderstanding is, it goes to committee for approval. Is it this committee that it comes to approval for, or is it the variance committee?
For the chair, this committee, I I do believe. When I first started writing this report, I imagined this likely committee of the benefits, similar to the line of earnings. So this, we go back to the C P that, um, not the committee of this, it must be something that it was a by law. Um, or that is, um, third of the by law, that it must be a different plan. And the defense by law is.
Yeah, cause I'm thinking expedience, actually not appropriate act, but I was thinking expedience, because you can call a very, uh, anytime you want, this maybe only needs once a month. And then in the Whitwell, not that anybody's building one in December, January, or February, but sometimes doesn't need for those couple of months, so. Thinking it might have been better. Oh, okay, that one, um, and. I- is there renovations to fences included in the bylaw somewhere as well? So like, if there's an existing fence that wasn't. Wasn't party to offense by law. And somebody wants to do work on that fence. Do they need, or is it part of this, and my apologies for not asking that one ahead, I have it in my notes, I just forgot to ask it with my listing. Of questions. Okay, so if nothing was needed before, you're allowed to maintain something that wasn't needed, perfect, so, thank you.
I don't have any questions. All right, uh, the only one I had, it's kind of touching on what the the mayor was asking about is, you know, you know. The idea, and I mean, I know that the, uh. Uh, that the community of adjustments meets once a month as well, so, um, but being that it can't be them, is it something that we could? We should be completely rewording it to say, any committee or council, so we can just grab the next meeting, I don't know how often this is gonna happen, I don't know if that makes any sense to do that, but. You know, that would be my only, my only question about, can we do that to make it easier, so that, you know, if it falls, that we get one tomorrow, for instance. You know, can we handle it as the next possible opportunity to work out, and that's. So, I guess. Uh, any other thoughts, anybody? So, with that, then, um, with the recommendation, would we then have to say as amended, uh, and the idea of that, and see if we, uh, support or? See if you think that's what we do, it's, um, if you have, if you have the will of maybe, if if we have that. Committee of the whole doesn't include council, or is that, no, it's probably, or annual council, I guess, right? Either the committee of the halls or. Uh, okay, do I have a rubber for, uh, for the amended, or, okay, so, uh, moved by council's mail, seconded by the. All right, uh, all in favor of the recommendation, by the way, again, sorry, is that committee recommend that council amend the fence by law. Twenty two, twenty twenty two dash forty one as attached, and delegate authority to approve exemptions to the fence by law. To the committee of the whole, sorry, to any committee of the whole, or council. Okay, all in favor? Right, good. All right, uh, moving on to number six C, which is information on development in the rural policy area. And I believe you're, uh.
For as an information item for now, knowing that another reports. Uh, you know, tell, also doing the business, um, I think that numbers were looking forward and not a lot of this. Um, my office information is quite basic, um, probably, um, just. Reviewing what the council from committee, the article, uh, meaning. Um, but one feature I have thinking for the committee here, and it's from product. So, um, if anything I requested in April, um, that are considered, that I have been a lot size in the. And this is going to require a plan amendments and then turn amendments to the contract zone by law. Um, just providing counties, there be approval authority for local additional plans, and, uh, further consultation with the counties, like. Free, um, pre-consultation. Um, we state this is early, um, completion permits, for the zoning by law, the council will be approving the order there, um, depending on. To the zoning by law, it was all on the mission, I remember those topics, and for me, it's so long. Maybe not, one after the other, the reason. So the second consideration is that the minimum lot rent to blocks in the area, you could use from seven years to four to five years. This, um, is within our zoning by law, it's not a requirement in our plan, but that's specific with. Um, it can be considered on lots, such as the basis where application made by the owner. If the application in minor nature or minor variance could be obtained, subject to the lower judgment. Or on primary challenge, it could amend the section of the zoning by law to reduce the minimum block rent requirement. Uh, integration number P, that the maximum number of two new locks considered by consent in the rural area, the increases of three. Which does not include the same, so it's three new lots being considered. Um, and also that the original law describes in policy seven one three, going to be defined as. Lot existed on December sixth, two thousand thirteen, November seventh, uh, and eighth. So this would require. Amendments and also there's no. And then it, oh, and also move that lot creation in the rural area.
Thank you very much. So just so I'm clear that we have the discussion in the right direction. These are, these are ideas that that we want to reinforce so that the honor can work on on these initiatives here, so. I like to keep the conversation about these initiatives particularly, and then knowing that we're still waiting on a hold. Okay, uh, okay.
Might be a good idea for the council or for this committee to look over. Is the options and the considerations that are on the fore right now to make sure that. You're happy with what they are. Or yet you wanna make some changes cuz now is the time to do it.
That's then agreed, and I think that's the uh, that's basically the 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 question, the statements there, so I mean. Uh, you know, as worded from from uh, from staff. Uh, are there any considerations that that we wanna discuss cuz you don't like, I guess, as well, if you're happy with them, then we'll continue with those. As we accept those and then send them along for direction, so. Yeah, um. And so. So we know, and we I've spoken with the C O about this, there are. Um, uh, some changes coming to. To the provincial policy statement that that will affect this, you know, in particular. Um, you know, it's going to go, it looks like it's going to automatically go to three in the in the provincial policy statement. Um, and the changes that'll be coming forward in there. I haven't read through all of. All of the changes yet myself, but there are some some changes there, so. My question is, um. You know, what what, when we make the changes and we do them. If they're gonna change things in the P P S. Does it make sense to be doing our application before they make that change, or should we wait until like? Cuz the United Counties is gonna have to update theirs. And then. If we automatically apply after that, then then it'd be automatic approval. They couldn't deny it. Um, and until we know what those changes from the P P know they're coming and they're out for comments now from from staff. So. So we know that that's happening in the near future. Then would we, like, is it worthwhile waiting a a small amount of time until that P P S? The P P S changes, cuz do we really wanna do an O P amendment? And zoning by law amendments when we're gonna have to do them. To reflect. To reflect those changes anyways, and won't the United Counties have to do theirs before we do ours? Cuz we have to agree on that, correct? Or the thoughts?
Believe there's a clause getting those changes that is going to tell us, or gonna tell us that the. That's what the rule is, like, even if we're late in in July, then then those changes will apply. We just got there with Novo Tech and um, asking the community, can it support? Whether all the people are required, so we can see how these changes go. There are some, along with my stats, there have been so many changes recently happening, but. Gravity and we we all needed and told me it's where.
Okay, that that makes that makes ten sense, then, so then hearing that. Um, you know, I I would make the suggestion for if they're already going. There, the P P S is already going to change and go to three. Then. Why wouldn't we go more aggressively and go to four? Okay, right, and and if we go to go to four and go to the minimum size. Like, here's a way other. If we can add one now at two point seven, two point four seven or two point seven four acres. Right? And then and then the end, we can end up doing three, we have point nine eight acres. You end up with almost the exact same amount of land, but you you end up with a little bit more intensified development along the side of the road. You you lose the same amount of land virtually either way. And I know when we knock doors through the the mandate that we got from the folks that were there, they didn't want three acre lots. Right? They hated having to maintain it. Most of the people we talked to said. Uh, we prefer that it was still the farm land and they were still farming. So so hearing that from most of the people that that bought it, they were, they think a point ninety acre lot when they move in from the city is enormous. Right? So if if it can appropriately house septic system in a well on point ninety acres, why wouldn't we go to that? And that would be my first suggestion, because they can always add more land if they want to add more land to. Right? If we force them to start out at two point seven four acres, they can still add land to that if they want. But then they gotta come back for another approval if they wanna shrink it, and we've done that as well. We did it. Uh, several occasions in Alaska. Where we allowed people with health unit approval. Um, to to go on smaller lot sizes, but my idea is, uh, why make, why make more rotate? Why make it another step that folks have to go through? If we can cut those steps now, we can get lots developed. I mean, the idea is that we need we need lots to have houses. We've heard people talk about housing. Issue already on a couple of occasions tonight. Why not create more lots, get more lots available for folks, uh, so that we can we can give them opportunity to build this. More lots lowers the price. Its houses built. So my suggestion would be like, and I know it's probably not a number throwing around kinda kinda deal, but I would I would go with the uh. Um, the smallest lot size possible. I think it's point nine eight acres and and I would say I'd like to see it at four sentences versus three. And I and I know the P P S is gonna say three and. Maybe some different sizes and frontage requirements and stuff like that, but I wanna go with the minimum. Uh, possible, uh, and we can increase on that if. That'd be my.
Worked it in my mouth for, uh, I just have one comment. It was, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You're working hard. It says at the bottom of the additional lock creation, rural area may still occur, oh, no, sorry. Additional information will be brought to the committee in future report prepared by November. What's our future report? If we have any idea, will we hear it in June? Will we hear a report in July? Any timeline on that, I just kinda. As you know, like, get things moved. So is there any timeline that we will have this report back on with that? Will be in June, I report.
Yes.
Of the CDC, good, thank you.
What concerns of the uh, the county's official plan? I don't know how many people have read parts of that county's official plan. But when it comes to a lot of things, it's like a blank. And it says, look at the specific township's plan. That's what it says in the county's plan. Look at the specific township's plan, so the county is pretty vague on a lot of things in the plan. They pass it back down to the county. And if I may just talk about. I realize that there's some information there that there is a chance for reduced lots other than the two hectare, but you know. It is my understanding unless things have changed, that things do change. That if I was looking to get, if I come into the township. With a a proposal for a one acre law. The process would be that I would have to go to in front of the committee of adjustment to get the the uh. Times reduced, which is going to cost me how much money? How much money to load up for like, before the county, the meeting of adjustment? So I'd like this to be six hundred and fifty dollars to get my lot reduced from an hectare to an acre. And I guess I just wonder why we're putting people through.
And I mean, I think I I think it would come from here. So, yeah, and and, you know, I mean, uh, yeah, well, we don't have a feel here as a discussion.
Maybe reduce the side of the lot. Lock up any reduction in in measurements. I had to come through the committee of adjustment, but I might be wrong. I remember one time we reduced a lot, which was on the Scott Road. Which at one time was a total, total mess of the official plan and the zoning by law. Because they didn't match. The zoning by law was at an acre, and the effective plan is at a hectare. And it was just a misunderstanding. So there was a a lot that was taken on, a proposal for a service was taken on the Scott Road. And they had to take it a few hectares. And for them to go to the one acre law, we had to go to the committee adjustment to have the lot more work to one acre. And what was a cost to individuals, so I think by reducing the lots to one acre. They can have two acres, they can have three acres, they can have four acres, you know, but the minimum lot.
It is a minimum. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you had more questions? Uh, and yeah, and I and I think it directly relates back to this and and, you know, as I spoke before, and I have had this discussion with with the C. You as well, and um. But it it relates to this this. This discussion because there there is a will of of council here, and I think or committee for that matter. Um. You know, and and I think it's important that we we nail it down and we narrow it, we narrow it down actually, because I don't know how long. The comment period is on the changes to the P P S. But um, I think my question to staff is that when staff makes comments. Um, and reports back on. Gives reports or gives comment to to the P P S when they're asked to give comment, or or the planners for that matter as well. Um. You know, what, I guess my question is what direction do they go under when they get that? Is it the will, like, is it the will of our committee, or is it? I mean, I know that. Staff has a very firm grasp upon upon us, but does Nova Tech, if Nova Tech's commenting on it, do they? Do they comment on on it from an Edwardsburg Cardinal perspective, knowing? You know that we're aggressive, that we we want development, we want that sort of stuff, or do they comment on it, you know? Their way like, I mean, I I. If they're commenting on my behalf, I'd like to know, you know, kind of what they're, they're not.
No, Nova Tech would not submit comments on our behalf, we know.
Okay, okay, so so we will be submitting comments, I'm making the assumption. And so do we have clear direction then, like, does staff have what they need from? From the group at the table to make sure that our comments and our our wishes are accurately represented in the comments and the feedback we give to the project?
Well, through through for the chair, I think it was like a pretty good understanding. Um, one of the reasons that we brought these considerations. Was really sure that we brought the conversation from the previous meeting. That appeared now to me, if not hurry, maybe if not four, right? Hey, in very embarrassing conversation, it it.
I wasn't here the last minute.
So, yes, there there was not consensus for four in that meeting in the last meeting. That's why we're bringing it back to consensus.
Okay.
So that when we're getting Nova Tech before, and when we're looking to comment during the P P S. That we're clear on what that feeling is.
So then if I can, um. To the to the chair then, um, you know, maybe we can look, um. Uh, for all members of of committee and and council. Um, to. You know, commit to giving giving solid direction to to staff tonight, you know, if that suggestion. Can come out so that way staff is prepared to make comments that represent the viewpoints of. Whatever the will of the committee and council is. Yes, and and I think just before, and I think we will ask that question, that's fair. Um, but unfortunately, I, uh, Mr. Toby provided something last time we had a meeting and I, yeah. Can't seem to locate where I put it, but I can't, I think there was other areas, other other townships that did have. Four is their severance number as well, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
That's correct.
That was great, so. Yeah, so so I mean, uh, so maybe it's best to take it in the vote, but anyways, why don't we just push it to the table and, uh. Uh, give me a number, three or four would be the would be the question, or if a different number, throw that out there as well, so, uh. Well, we're asking, we're asking the committee, so. Yeah, I've already said four and four and not three, not two, not one, yeah, five, four. Um, and the smallest, uh, smallest lot and smallest, smallest furniture. I don't even have to say anything, I think that's a nice firm direction for for staff.
I think for consideration number three is. But one thing I would ask a little bit of clarity on with respect to the smallest lot possible. That's the smallest lot possible without additional requirements?
Yeah, so a question that I had, I know we talked about point four acres last last meeting, um, and and. Sorry, yeah, point four acres and it's really small. But what I was trying to ascertain from that is, you know, um, and I just, you know, what is the? You know, and I know there's, I think we talked a bit about there's, there's, there's features or factors that could come into play there, so. You know, I wasn't necessarily settled on the point four hectares versus what's the minimum you can get away with knowing you're probably gonna need. You know, a septic system and a well and everything, so what is the lot size? And I know we talked about point four acres. But I wasn't sure, I I had the feeling that we were gonna seek. What that number could be as opposed to writing it on the floor, that was my perspective, so. But anyway, so, um. You know, but so anybody have any comments on that? I mean, I don't know, I just, I think whatever we can do based on the facilities would make more sense, but. To to the chair, cuz I I would prefer, um, I mean, it's great to ask the planner for. Um, you know, for their for their opinion, but I I would prefer that we went to it with with what our expectation is first. And so that they know exactly what what we want. To do that, and then let them come up with some other argument. We we have two point seven four, two point four seven at this, at this point, um. I certainly, you know, it's a different, a different group at the table, it's a different direction. We're certainly far more aggressive when it comes to rural development than. Than, um, uh, we've seen in the past, and I want the planner to. Understand where we we come from as a group. I don't suspect that that probably changes the outcome, but I want them to know. And my only concern is, you know, I am a no septic expert, for instance, so I don't know that number, so for me to say, hey, maybe it's half an acre, I I have. You know, I don't have the expertise to to wanna make that decision, to be honest, but.
Mr. Chairman, just looking at the nine municipalities that I went through and. Look at the severance requirements. There's, there's no other municipality that has a severance allowance on less than half, than less than an acre. So I'm thinking that you might have a hard call with anybody building. A house and a septic system on half acre, I just don't think it's possible.
So any other comments on this particular topic? So, I mean, uh, what's the direct, wanna take that? I mean, you know, like I said, what's that, sorry? One acre. Very one acre. The consensus on one acre, and I and I realize that we'd like it to be as far as that if it was possible, but. You okay with that?
I like one acre, but I still don't see, I'm finding it smaller as possible.
And and me neither, I think it depends on the, I mean, that's how you do the ask, and I think that's up to staff to, uh, to words that that for, it's simply. And, and me neither, I think it depends on the, I mean, that's how you do the ask, and I think that's up to staff to, uh, to, to words that that forms, and like, you know, maybe to the mayor's point, it's point eight, four eight position. Okay, and so that's that. Uh, on the, as far as consideration with two goes, we talked about, uh, this, this seventeen out of forty-five meters, and I don't even know where that number came from, did we establish that, give you guys that coverage, that was greenness for the townships? And that was the minimum, then somebody else, that was the lowest.
There was one, which was a little bit even less than that, but the majority of the purpose.
Yeah. So, is everybody okay with forty-five, or are we? The, the objections are forty-five, twenty-four, I was just showing point four hectares is point ninety acres, fair enough, okay. I think what we're asking for is point four acres if you ask anyways, as opposed to one acre, so point four hectares, so point four hectares, I say it again, okay. All right, uh, any objection to forty-five meters? Okay. For that, I think we consider as a thing there, the last thing we didn't talk about then is consideration number four, uh, which is the December twenty thirteen date as opposed to the twenty, two thousand and three date, and again, that number I don't remember, was that something that the deputy mentioned before, was that last time, or is that the member that staff where they was established, or?
That's something we're sending a little, uh, if the plan. Looking at.
So, yeah, I think, I think for the chair, I think I'm going to say since like four, twenty twenty-three now, and the date was two thousand and three.
Yeah, okay. Can I ask about, yes, through the chair, what's the implication? I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the significance.
I understand.
Between two thousand and three and two thousand and thirteen, what's the implication? That's what. I mean, I know it's ten years, but.
So there's the, there's a, how many lots, you, outside of the policy, policy by consent. Um, and, uh, limit is applied to, uh, a lot of record, we added one for gas seventy-sixty-two thousand and three. So I would round the lot and I sever off, so that once I sell this lot, that person, they're able to sever it further, but that's two lots from the lot record. Or this person could sever it again before that, but that, that's two lots, a lot of record, but you can sever off two lots and then sever off two lots from that, and then sever on two lots from that, you're essentially creating a subdivision there. There really, so it's two lots from the lot. So there's a lot, like, like, two thousand and three, so.
So, so through the chair then, so then two thousand and thirteen becomes less restrictive to, to new lot, like, to, to new lot development versus two thousand and three. Two thousand and thirteen is. That's my, that's my. And, and I mean, I, I think that's a reasonable lead to be, I was floating around in my head the idea of, and I suspect it's probably not an idea to say last ten years and just leave it at that, and then it's always evolving, but I think probably if we said twenty thirteen and then revisited this in ten years from now, it'll change again to, when it's only for you, that's up to, but that's up to, yeah, our, our, our kids on council, whoever it would be. Okay, uh, any objection to twenty, twenty thirteen as the date given? Objection, okay. Just get up your air, no, no. Cancel my call. Okay, so I think that solidifies ask number four, is considering number four as well. Um, okay, any other discussion on this overall, is whether I want to close this one? Yes. And you did get everything you needed from that, I'm assuming?
The chair, anything I needed to run, um, real Nova Tech on, on the, the. I would like better understand what the comments committed for those PPS, we haven't really talked about the proposed PPS and I have been, for another day, it's maybe about as well, I was starting with that section and um, part of comment on this, I think is that they're waiting after.
Well, is, is that the kind of thing I'm asking, sort of, you know, with the mayor, you know, um, where you'll know more in a month when we have the, when we have it back, because I don't think it's gonna change the ask necessarily to, uh, to the planner, but we'll know more potentially.
The chair, the period of course, the issue is, you know, or, you're, it's like, especially beginning to.
Yeah.
So, um, there was a question, I think that has been there for council to.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I know, I think I could say that here under this discussion, but there, you know, and my knowledge of, of it is that there are, um, supposedly, I, I, I have not, uh, been able to read, to read them myself, um, certainly, again, I, I talked to the CEO about the, the changes to the PPS as far as connecting the partial services, um, but in the way that I and I've read a couple of the paragraphs, I don't really see, um, you know, the words, uh, you know, in the settlement area still remain in, uh, in the paragraphs. Um, we specifically commented because of, of the proposed subdivision, um, uh, and Roma took it on, I know Robin Jones presented it at, at Roma about, and used our, uh, that exact, uh, example. You know, you can't connect with sewer line that goes by your front door because you're not in, not in filling, it's not considered in filling, it's not considered general rounding out, and it's not within the settlement area. But yet the sewer line goes by the door and you're not allowed to connect to it, and the planner gave recommendation against it, and everybody on committee supported it, so, um, supposedly that change has been, that our situation was used to formulate the new connection um, or the new policy where, where, uh, you'll be allowed to connect to partial services or the recommendation is, but, um, I'm not an expert in, in that, and that's certainly a staff function, I think. Um, I just wanna make sure though that it, it's enough, or it says enough, so that if it isn't, that we actually, we, you know, get the will of, you know, of what, what the group wanted, and certainly at the time, the planner recommended against, and but yet everybody on committee wanted, we asked MMH and they were um, non-committal, I think is, is a fair way of saying it, so we were sort of left with, we didn't really know how to, so, uh, and I've been told that the changes do reflect our inability for us to connect with them, uh, putting us in front of the, uh, yeah, I would call it the one D, but I'm lacking words right now, whatever it be, but you know what I mean? Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that we, I don't think we can have that discussion, so I mean, right, I mean, nobody's equipped for it, but, um, uh, my concern, I think, when I spoke before was to, to, so that staff understood where council, if it's different than what I think it is, then, you know, then that's okay. But I, you know, it's going back a long time for the last discussion we had about that subdivision, there were, uh, you were on CDC, council, smail, council, Martell, we're on council when we had, we had that discussion at the table, so for me to, I think I know how they, they view it, um, but I, I don't know that, we've never actually had that discussion, um, you know, at the table, so, um, if I expect staff to understand and know that, we sort of have to have a discussion, but we can't have that discussion if we don't know, or have an interpretation of what that policy actually says.
The chair, so staff, staff are getting, super many, uh, staff can like staff confirm that the full change in the PPS are not pressing, um, would allow them to, um, the most subdivision.
I don't know that I needed that way, I think it's broader than that, that, you know, that it reflects, you know, the changes we needed to be able to attempt the partial services no matter where.
I agree.
Anyways, yeah.
Um.
I think the figure on the new chair, I think, uh, I, I was saying with the, the four considerations, it's pretty clearly about.
Yeah.
The way it is, we're not be able with respect to extending into the rural areas. So I think that can relate to expect to. Service.
Okay. Comfortable.
Uh, however, sometimes, that's a policy thing, that's gonna be a little bit cryptic with respect to, uh, uh, to finish, so we, 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 we're looking at. Prepare what we think are.
And do we have to counsel itself? And if I, I can say to staff, hopefully that's the goal of the group at the table, but that, that is fantastic, and that's, you know, that's, um, probably tough part to love about it, I knew that would be your answer, but I, it always is, and, and I know you guys do a fantastic job, so, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that we had that discussion at a table, right, not just me, me and anyone an email or, or something like that, and we need input from all five, so. Any objections on council, let's see that at the council meeting at the end of this book? All right. There, let's see, there, uh, that's okay, uh, moving on to number six B, number one, uh, so work economic development, this is information on the tourism partner project, all of forty-four.
Julie. Um. So, exactly. You've got, uh, a tourism project. Um, you're pretty cool with our regional tourism organization, which is RTO nine, uh, also with the new salary for Brenda and my real business, who's, uh, Martin Powers, and also the new, uh, neutral park. Um, our plans, the, uh, a self-aided tour, you know, by listening video, where the each park, we can, and it's central, central bill, and adding self-aided, really highlight, this is the, that are located in Martin County Route forty-four. Uh, they'll be follow forty-four, so they could do the support, um, of the activities so that are including to North Brenda is keeping the legal in product activity and cooperating, this is our friend with that, I think that's asked for. Um, it's part of the problem with that, um, while the majors, Sebastian is a recipient of the RTO nine funding program for this part of it, so the financial partners here are RTO nine is saying fifty percent of, uh, for most of the land, twenty percent, and it was reported with point of origin of that cost as well, um, and, uh, the players will need to, or can they take care of the, uh, the financial parts of that project, they would pay any bills to conduct this, or the, or the, of any of the, of that ring. Um. So the goal is to start this project in late summer or early fall, involve a lot of, um, interaction with local businesses and even some networking events, hoping that, um, the, the summer trip could grow into, um, where businesses can partner together and, you know, nineteen days also, pretty good, pretty good. To the table, um. Part of the project needs something signage along the route, that would add height, it's a little bit on, on follow forty-four, and, uh, would not, uh, it's looking to the dining house, and I'll let it be shot and be placed on each of the partners, uh, what.
Thank you very much, um. Yeah, I mean, this is, I think this is, we talked about this a few times as well, maybe just even, I talked about it, but, uh, I just think anytime we have any, any little thing where we can get, you know, uh, more people coming into the area through whatever, this is every area, there's this great thing, and support good business, so, well, we get, uh, at that point, gone to, uh, can't survive, can I? Any questions or comments?
Consider any possibility, we can finish a room to everybody down there, so.
Yeah.
Three hundred sixty-sixty-four, all the way down.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Uh, I think it's great, uh, especially when we're working with other townships, and even we're only going to forty-four and expensive, like Mr. McDowell says, and on these months, can expand upon those, but. Uh, well done, thank you very much, very exciting to see. It won't be on my flight, but probably in the car.
But I mean, something inspired, too. I, uh, I, I again as well, think that this is fantastic, I've been following the social media to, to the east of us with South Storm on and, and South Dundas, and they've been doing, you know, uh, use, follow the QR code for a long time down there to go to all of the different assets and that sort of thing, and this RTO is, is, you know, just building upon that, but for our area, and, and I love that we're gonna work along with, uh, with North Brenda, we've talked about, you know, uh, non-amalgamated collaboration for quite a long time here, and, and it's nice to see efforts like this moving forward, so, well done.
I think it's a great idea. And I wanna give kudos to the counties, to anybody that has driven the town road forty-four, particularly from the Heimlich Road into, well, into Northport, Grandville. They have a massive cuts of the ash trees that are dead, and it just looks so beautiful now, and the trees are gone. Now, green grass is on, so I think they, they really, they must have cut a dozen trees last week, and they're like this.
Give it five, that's great. Anything that might be, maybe still, it's fantastic.
So then, and I echo that as well, I mean, I think this is a great initiative, and, and for a very low dollar, uh, uh, from the townships perspective, to help, to help injure, injure trauma, I mean, and, uh, uh, in the back of my mind, I keep hearing the curve, the Paris movie theme now going on my head, but anyways, what can I say? Um, so, uh, what do you need from us here? Just to say, okay, now it's just, okay. Great, thank you very much. All right, uh, moving on to number six, uh, C, plan recreation, item number one is a discussion on the monarch restoration program, is that the CEO's gonna get to talk with butterflies, or is that?
Uh, that, that would be the, uh. Uh, this, uh, there's been some talk for, for a few years now, around, maybe, you know, this, uh, breaks away, uh, project, um, the application announced. I want to appropriate all, there's a plan to comply with, they spread to, probably get an application today. Um, and we know, uh, the last, uh, couple, uh, um, application, in case we, we were unable to get something from her, so, with the, with the help of sanitation and conservation, we, uh, put together a communication and just selected a few, a few locations as possible spots for the, uh, sort of native metal rooms. Um, I mean, education's the important one, one of the, uh, number of those public spaces, where there's a bit of traffic, so we get some, and we educate this, and, and follow on that, other than and then, uh, the potential for staying there, through some of the, uh, rows on a later name of this, uh, to this program, so. And indicate that I did receive word that our application successful, or they're impressive, they've been, uh, and seeing the project move forward. One of, one of the areas that we've been pulling together, I'm sure that maybe, uh, some discussion, but, but, uh, the, 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 okay, the, the, uh, you know, with, with, you see, there was also A and B and, uh, few other locations that we sort of, uh, played in. Wasn't really disturbed that at the time of the application, on, on, so say like slight more rest, where we would you know, the partner received that funding and now that you know that. Certainly, you have the years. Of, of committee on, uh, on locations, uh, there's probably eleven or, or more than, than, uh, raised, uh, with the, the staff of the post. I'm taking no offense to the, uh, you know, the location that, that were really chosen in the post. Focus is the only thing that we're gonna place a little bit of, you need to read, in the, in the, in the signs, not, or, 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 they weren't wanting to use it.
Uh, all right, of that note, I think we'll do a fair last, just kidding. Uh, that's, maybe this, uh, something that's right up your alley as far as vertical.
Thing I am most excited about, absolutely, I think it's fantastic that you were able to meet the deadline and get the funding, um, and you know, to me, I mean, location is a good location to start, um, but I do love, um, the idea by the library, if, um, this is where council is supportive of, um, developing community burden, it would go quite naturally with um, that there. And, um, I always say, you know, I cry out up and down from, from Cardinal to Earth Block. I'm up down there all the time, and that whole corridor there is the perfect spot for, um, on our butterfly, um, sanctuary type area, yeah, uh, and a great place to have no, even, wouldn't interfere with any labor culture or anything, and so, um, but this, this. So, but this, this is the areas that you have marked out here are also very touristy and, and where they're trapped. I think. So like I said, any location is a good location, but, but yeah, I'm very pleased with this.
You know, and it's funny, I ruled the term pollination before, but I guess I could apply yours or not. Okay, Mr. David, sir.
I'm a big lover of monarch butterflies and. Been around a lot longer than anybody in this room. Now I can remember calling them milkweed, it used to be around, you know, the farmers couldn't even kill it in the fields, they'd whip them off, but now with the new. Sack aside that they have, they, you never see milkweed, already it's all. I'll take it back a little bit further because always as I said, the soft spot of my heart when I was a, a kid going through grade one. And it was at the one room school in, in Ventnor. And just get this, there were three in grade one, by the way, but there were eight classes in the school. And one of the things that the teacher did was one of our objectives was to write a, a few sentences or a paragraph on the monarch butterfly. And I remember catching a monarch worm. But in a milkweed and the teacher put it in a bottle and we watched that progression on that monarch butterfly fly hatch. Until it became a butterfly from cocoon for the word. And you know, that's one of the things that I, one of the, pretty much the only thing that I remember at school, the one in school. And. And I've just actually contacted a, a. A place in Stixville that sells the flowers and shrubs and that sort of thing, they've got these new bushes now and I really. Suggested everybody needs to buy, it's called a butterfly bush. And it's a cousin of the milkweed, but it's more in a bush form. And it has all these masses of orange flowers on it. That help the butterfly and it's a good replacement for just the ordinary milkweed. It's called the, I don't know what the Latin word is, words are, but it's called the butterfly weed. Everybody were to buy one, put it in your garden, we could do. They're quite attractive.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Bear, okay, I'll go on.
Yeah. Well, I love this. Sorry, yes, go ahead.
Just have a follow up, so is that the west addressing with respect to the analogy between. You know, weed agriculture, it's very well.
It, it's a plant that you want to day ahead before it seeds. But they say it will seed in the same spot as the original plant, so. When we get carried away, but they say they day ahead and before they seed, but they're beautiful, just let them up and.
I'm going to fire apart, but you do, it's unusual, but you're allowed to ask questions. I thought you wanted to go back to the one house, well, it's one or two, honestly. Hey, I love this. I am so happy to hear that we are successful with this, I've pushed. This for the last two or three years with Victoria Woodhouse, I guess the, is the person's name and, and certainly. I think I saw it necessarily as, as butterfly, I think it's grown into butterfly, I think it originally was pollinator. Rights of way and it's sort of grown into being monarch, you know, monarch mixed in with, with that initiative as well, and I know. Counselor Hunter spoke, you know, about why we don't do roadsides and roadside ditches and stuff next to cornfields and, and farmers' fields, but. Certainly with respect to Kim, that's what I have in my notes is, you know, that where we, where we clean out that entire canal bank. Along the highway two and we struggle to maintain because of all the wild parsnip and, and that sort of stuff. You know, that, that area for me comes to mind right away because every single person driving by would, would see that. But to further your point, and I've mentioned this to the CEO with everyone newer on board of it as well, but that area. From where the old boat houses were, were the cut at your block, has a roadway that is, that is used often with. With fisher people and dog walkers and stuff like that, but certainly not maintained to. To a great, to a great degree and to think that, you know, we can plant it and grow it into something that could turn into, you know. You know, beautiful flowers and, and a place for monarchs to thrive, I, I think that that's a fantastic location for it. As well as the library, my concern with the peninsula across from the Legion is that. Several times during the year, that area is used whether it's, you know, at, for fireworks, whether it's at Canada Day or whether it's at Labor Day. It certainly is a connect, a connecting point, it's an overflow for parking, for Legion events and it's certainly. You know, an underutilized area, but I think in, in the growing of that area, it's going to see more and more use and. In the future and I'd hate to see it limited because we, we were doing a restoration program there or, or the restoration program there got ruined because. You know, we wanted to park on that to watch fireworks on Canada Day, so I'm not sure that that place in my mind. Although it would be a fantastic spot and showcase it because everybody would see it, I just think that there may be better places suited, suited for it, so. Two cents, and, and I would add that I think the, the name of the program is the right, right of way, rights of way, right, or right of way? Meaning that it's supposed to go on unused road allowances, isn't that the idea?
That's right, the, the, the terminology is defined as a restoration program, but because the monarch is sort of the. We'll call it paperhead of, of, of the pollinator, it is a. Approach, but yes, it's in, it's in Rinsley, right, so there are some other locations. In effect, the, the, in that field park where. The whole was probably saying, the funny thing going there, we figured you'll have to know that. Like within that, it, it is a spot that could be done, but the real, the, the pre lines at least for, for this particular event was. Give it in a location where there's going to be lots of traffic, you can get the education if he's ever there, beginning wouldn't see it in some of those other locations that are probably easier to.
If you mean don't care about that. Does it reduce maintenance, is that the idea is that it, it stops moxus weeds, am I not, am I incorrect in doing that?
Yeah, so the, the, the pre, the pre lines is that you would. You would fill the area and.
Right, reduces maintenance, reduces costs.
For pollinators, screw that. May to October, I believe, I believe that it is. So that, that's the, that's.
Yes.
Part of that, I wanted to change initiative about library, not having to involve. Sort of what we, what we would consider a coastline, coastline in some of the little rooms, you would just be making the site. And that, that necessarily. It's all of those areas, but you know, still. Anywhere that you want to.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for that.
Yes, I, I agree, I kind of like to, first of all, you said we're successful, what are we successful at, how much? Is that in the description here, we're successful? The three thousand, two thousand, five hundred, three thousand?
Say there's seventy five.
Sorry?
There's seventy five on the.
Okay, so why can't, and that's supposed to be such an area, I agree, I agree with the mayor, I, I don't like the option C. I like the location, no question, but I like to save it for. I've seen it happen too many times, we need it for overflow, so, and B. Is a great place, well, can we split them up and do two projects last, nearly charging CEO? Like could we do half at the library and half up at the, at the industrial park? Because. A square footage or?
Be, again, for, for, for. So, you know, you do two areas, I, I, I would probably keep it, two areas would kind of simplify it in three or four because.
Okay, so we could do the library and up at the number two at the industrial park. Down by our, our sewage area down in somewhere. Is that right?
Yeah, well, yeah, potentially yes, for, 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 you know, I would just be a little. The, the, the. With respect to the range and I agree, because you, you really don't know how. The, 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 the ditch to, to, to the block.
It sure would give us lots of advertisement though, holy jeepers, that's all I'm looking at, and it's a terrible spot to clean and keep like. So that, that's my only, or that and down by the old boat houses, I think that's a super spot. So, but excellent idea, can't wait, hopefully we can maybe expand it next year, get another project, get it in our own budget. Think it's something that we need, so thank you very much, Mr. CEO, well done.
Mr. Will?
Yeah, well done, CEO, I agree with Steve, I would like to see it at the library along the canal. He said to Mayor, everybody who's in the Cardinal, or goes out of Cardinal, would see him, and it's beautiful for nothing else, yeah. That would be my number one, could be long, that would be high. Councilor Mattel?
I like the library location because wherever the location, if we're talking about through the chairs, we're talking about how educated people are. It's perfect marriage.
And if that.
I really love the site down by the Legion, but I agree with any fellow people at the table here, there's just too much traffic there, but that's not to be said, there's. They need to do a bank down there or do a couple of. Boxes, you know, again, just because there's so much traffic down there, it's a great opportunity for education, you know, if we had like that ten by four. See box within and pick up a situation and possibly the opportunity to move this forward, where you know, next summer, we're. Offering incentives to residents to put their own. Library or like their own, but it lies. So that's good. As for the butterfly, we don't need pollinator, we need to follow it in there. My last thought, listening to the, my right here, there seems to be some discussion here about who actually is the oldest person for data.
I know it's not me.
That's all I got.
Fair enough, yep, all right. Um, yeah, you know, I mean, I, I think it's a great initiative too, and, and I did not. Maybe did not appreciate the potential issue with, with location number C of the scene, you know, and, and. And, you know, but I sort of had similar thoughts as we were developing this conversation to, to Councilor Mattel on, you know, is there something we do along the bank, it's awkward, you can't really park a car, but I. But I must confess, I don't think I've seen cars parked all the way around there, but, you know, either that or, or is there a, is there a third option? And that you probably, and I'm not sure that the third option necessarily was the one you're proposing over by the, the waterworks itself, maybe that was your third, your third best option, but. It was like, is it not a long favor of it and, but I do trust, do trust you to be able to figure out if you think there's another better location that we can have that, or if we can make the one work. I think that'd be great, I need you know, personally. And then, so, so I guess we touched on a little bit with regards to, to maintenance costs and it sounds like this actual savings maintenance path, I was curious if there'd be maintenance of the actual. Self, would that be, you know, upset by?
Well, yes, if you, if you're, if you're, if you're not cutting that, that so, we'll save the library for instance, that, that area that we're actually. Creating that, you know, you're, you're no longer have to do it a week or a few weeks, you start, you, you set on. With respect to the other side, I know there's some thought with respect to. That canal bank along industrial street here that I'm, I'm going to say. Being around Benson Joseph Street, heavy, heavy east on that bank. There's a little, there, there, there's a little more work that has to be down there from. Simple, I, I said we'll start in location.
Are you talking about, so through the chair, you're talking about the north side or the south side of the bank?
We speak, you know, the south.
The south side of the bank in front of that, yeah.
And, and you talk about as an educational thing, so it would be signage and everything else, I'm assuming and.
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, I, I think we all sort of agree that the libraries, I agree with this to do that, especially in light of the education and everything else, and, you know, I, I know, for instance, my wife, when, when she was. Teaching kids, they would always have like a butterfly, you know, butterfly projects all the time, so I mean, people love the butterflies for sure, it's, it's a great thing to, to create a habitat for those. Mr. Mayor, I think you have. I, I do, and I just, because I don't think we're clear as a group on, on the across from the Legion. I know that there were a couple of you that spoken in favor, a couple of us that spoke against it, so I don't think it was clear. And I want to make sure the staff has, has clear direction, so in my mind, and I'm fine with the small area of, of that peninsula, but. Not unlike the way the diagram was where you lose the entire. Area, I did, I just, it gets utilized too many times for, for festivals and I certainly support those festivals, I, I support butterflies, but. But I support those festivals and, and, you know, parking, I don't want parking to become an issue for those festivals, so from, from my perspective. You know, I, I want to make sure that we clearly ruled that, you know, using the indoor part of that, I'm, I'm fine with the steep parts and the, the parts that aren't usable for anybody, but I don't want to see the. The peninsula used, so I, I don't know if you got clear enough, and again, if I lose that or lose that, but I, I just want to make it clear that I was. So I mean, I think that's worth comments from, from where on the table as well, so. You know, I don't know if any of this, or council, if you have anything else to add, and I mean, I, I think it's important that we figure this out, right, and, and, you know, is there enough space? Enough to be the CEO here, is there enough space to do something along the, along the, what's called the sides, for lack of a better saying, and get you the spatial part for this, or is this not adequate?
Well, I think, I, I think with respect to the library location, it's certainly, you're to think. I, 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 I'm in the, yes, that good location, if there's concerns about other, but the other location, we, we, we will look to adjust. But we find that. A more suitable location.
So.
There are probably several. But I'll just, but finding is certainly one of the. In this initial year, it's, it's in bad education, this one, we, we, we want to.
Yeah, but I mean, and like I said before, I, I trust you, if there's a, a, a third ideal location.
I agree with the, through the chair and CEO, we're going to start at a small, like start at the library, which is a perfect spot. Nothing saying we can't expand next year, but year after, those ones.
Yeah, I think we have to do two spots, right, we have to do two spots.
Well, we, we should, we're. So I'm just, so, so I certainly want to do that. As far as the, the second location.
I don't want to believe, but it kind of coincides as well, doesn't it? Nice, kind of like, like with, with, like, don't they kind of work, so, I mean, not to say that, because we certainly haven't discussed that part and this may. Complicate trying to find a location, but if there is a, and we have land that's available to it, it would help support. You know. For being used and pollinating, I mean, it's, it's all kind of part of that sort of.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I bet all of the, you know, like, it's all with, we're acting next week or so, so we'll, we'll put. See what, we'll see what the flexibility is. Through the chair, is there any, for the question, the size of butterfly is preferred living by water more than by grass?
Uh, through the chair, is there any uh, for the question besides the butterflies prefer living by water more than by grass?
Very good, Chair, and actually, I I am certainly not educated enough, like, we. If it's not an all in for areas like the CN crash, or I use like that, or or project lands, you know, I don't think it's really that. But I I I really, uh, I've got to.
Yet.
I I I just made a.
Okay, so uh, we feel able to correct them for you, then we'll we'll look for the suitable locations to do this with. Okay, well, that was.
I'm sure I just like the.
I don't know.
Some station stuff.
No, I know, and just I just know you've had that compared about this, we are, yeah, fair enough.
Currently in the weeds for this entire, this entire meeting tonight.
All right, so uh, I'm gonna move on to number six, six C, uh, number two, which is a discussion on the waterfront, like, no waterfront use update. Uh, is this CEO or is this back to this?
But just a follow up, we have the information, we have two allegations. Uh, the same as you already know, so we have a chapter in the thousand, I went to chapter, and I had some follow up with us. Uh, we hopefully will find uh, have sort of a stamp template sign that they're recommending that this uh. Should be, should should be put up, it's where the start of the way and the paint area, we also extended that, so it's a lot familiar. Say, one of the things that's not mentioned within the within the work that was raised by a number of uh. The staff was that, you know, we should ensure that uh. The signs are in both official languages, and I was with respect to that, so. That was one of my goals, and the reality of the uh, the comments and feedback that we had was after the uh, the region was produced, so. I'll bring that to the fore now, and just sort of looking for any additional feedback that came maybe in on that. And then just sort of follow up uh with respect to the uh, to the ball launch and uh. For for probably that uh, like, put it, put it together, serve it. With with respect to uh, the the videos and like the educational uh, piece ever, maybe some consideration to. Institute in the uh. For launching the.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. All right, thank you very much, Mr. CEO. Uh, all right, so on to discussion on this one. Uh, let's start with you, Mr. Martell.
I like all of this, this is great. I'd love to see a welcome to Edinburgh, okay, on that sign somewhere. Otherwise, yeah, it's great.
That's right.
I like the idea of the sign, but you can really tell that we are ready, because every word is please, 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 please. We definitely don't want them overnight parking. So, uh, I don't know where you put in front of them, say his letter, you don't want the letter, so maybe he puts a please once at the bottom. Like, respected the total posted speed, and it's like, during driving highway, when you see yellow sign that says twenty kilometers an hour, you don't have to go twenty kilometers an hour. It's one is white, everybody knows that, so they won't abide by it. So I do love the sign where you got it up, but I just think we're being too nice. Myself personally, people are just going to read it. I mean, if you know, you've been around as long as I have and Dave has, and a lot of people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yeah, I uh, I love the diver sign, and uh, I have got a problem with any of that, please, please. I mean, these guys are really working hard, both official languages, I agree. Uh, I think it's uh, whatever we can do. I don't know where this survey came from, though, I'm a little lost in the sample survey. Um, I thought, and I could be way wrong, but I thought we. We brought this up, I've been bringing it up for three years now, but I thought we had the direction to, we want to charge, so we want staff to give us uh. Some kind of. Mechanism of how we can collect the money. I didn't under, I I didn't realize we're having a sample survey or we want to produce a survey. So I'm a, I'm a little, I'm a little lost on that sample survey, like, that's what it was, our director was to get people. Uh, where they said on our last interview, on our last uh, discussion. At the uh, approval of the last agenda, it says in the gym of the citywide can do this. Or whatever, so I'm I'm just a little lost in the survey, but I want to, I want to get action, like, you know, I, you know, there's a good, again, what shelf we're going to put the survey on.
Yeah, and I thought we'd be, you know, ask for options, but so, uh, seriously, oh, uh. Did, uh, did we mess up the ask or we?
So, good, 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 Chair, we will, we test. Through uh, the citywide permit system, uh, you want your form number on first line, and you want, you you want to charge. It it is an option, yes, it is an option, um, one of the, one of the items that uh. Again, I propose the survey to use it as the education piece for channeling instead of uh, individuals arriving at a boat launch. And working with an applicant fee. That would, that's a, that would, that that's really the long, that's the long and short of it. Of work, working at a different, a different option for that education piece, the signals that roll up in the past, um, that, but that's. Being what that, but um, committee and council, if they so desire, they've been. Complimented uh, a P and. I'm not, I I I'm not a voter, so I don't know if they come prepared with, with their. And then parents, I wouldn't go on the uh, on 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 the water unless, um, so. I just was looking at the, at the perspective of the option of 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 sitting in that on the first place. And we're to the building perfect, he's really instituted as, I think that was pretty a charge for, for for the. That's that's where the, that it came, uh, came from, uh, but as far as the ability to uh. Give you implement a charge, yeah, we are, we are, we are, we can do.
Um, so we could do it, do we have it in place by this Saturday?
Actually, I think this is the wrong meeting, we were discussing this.
No, I'm only kidding, so we we can do it, uh, let's see why.
You do it for security, or you could, you could. Call, you can go on, you, you can put the name, your license plate in, that would go to the pay there. However. I'm just not sure when you did that educational piece out to the individuals. Uh, and that that was looking at that. That using receiving as an education component, getting, getting some feedback. That. Okay, I guess I was also looking at the. Sort of the view, I guess, from from the staff, it probably won't be part of the name.
Yeah, I love to go down, actually, I will go down.
The paper, you can pay me if you.
Well, well, you don't have, you you don't like the.
Oh, I don't like paper, you know. Uh, Mr. Bill, yeah, uh, so my, so two concerns with the sign, I love the sign, I think obviously English and French. Uh, I think the issues that have been raised mostly concern license plates from out of province, so I think there's a necessity. Uh, you know, that they be in both both official official languages. Um, my question is, how big are the signs? Like, are we talking the size of that TV, or are we talking like the size of this? Like, it's, you know, I think a lot of it, no, I'm I'm, I mean, there's a bit of sarcasm there, but I mean. Or is it something that they're actually going to notice on the way by, or or, you know, is it going to be substantive enough that that we get message across?
Sure, well, good, good, to the chair, I I would love that it would be large enough that they are legible, uh, as you're, as you're approaching. I just take the one rate at the. The time say change room doesn't need to be as large as the one that you're, as you're entering the area, but you're, you're, you're correct, like. I think, you know, it's, it's going to be much larger than the eye type. As on the table. We have to, we have to discuss the exact size and 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 placement on that, but I understand.
It's hard to read them when you're drawing a fifty five most now, I just want to make sure that.
Of Steve, we're.
See, okay, that's my concern. My only other concern is that it's an SOS sign, um, not, not an Edwardsburg Cardinal sign. And and I really, you know, to echo, um, you know, Counselor Martell, um. I mean, I don't know, again, and it's the same thing that I'm going to say about leasing the boat launch, but I don't know how we, how we police this. Um, but I think that this is a great and a fantastic start to try to. Address resident concerns and uh, not limit use. So I think it's a a great beginning, but I want it to be just. Not a diver initiative, I want it to be recognized that it's a council initiative and a township initiative as well. So, I mean, I'd like to see her name on there somewhere, somewhere.
You know, potential on the.
Okay, and then, uh, if I may, uh, just because there's two parts to this discussion, right? So one is the survey. So I I hundred percent uh, support charging at the boat launch, I think now's the time. Um, you know, I I have no issue, um, and I and I know staff has to take heat as well, they'll get the phone calls, we'll get the phone calls as well. I'm certainly fine with taking my, my share of whatever, whatever that is. I I think as we continue to make investments uh in that waterfront. Um, more and more people will will take advantage of that. We want to continue investing back in it with, I know it's not going to raise a ton of money. Um, but if we get, even if we get five or ten thousand dollars to continue to put towards, you know, maintenance of docks and then making improvements in that area every year. Uh, at a minimal cost to us to do those, then that, you know, it's something that we have to do. Um, and certainly for for non-residents, you know, the the thought that somebody's going to come down this weekend from, you know, North Bay or from Ottawa and and, you know, you, you know. Drive down to to use the fantastic uh walleye fishery that we have, uh, and use a boat launch that's provided to them uh free and and no charge. Um, you know, from a resident standpoint, you know, I I think a small charge, but for for an out of towner. Uh, they're going to pay wherever they go to launch that boat uh anywhere around us. I think it's time that that they pay to use our launch, especially if we're going to. Have an expectation to maintain it and keep it at a really high level. I think that that's the responsibility of those using it. Uh, to to pay for those things, not uh the folks that that don't, don't use them. So, um, my my only concern. Um, having said that, is we really don't have a policy in place for it. Um, we don't, you know. Have any idea how we can police that, even if we do put something in place. And we certainly don't know what the repercussions, um, you know, so what if I don't pay the, pay the ten bucks, right? What's? Like, is there a fine, is there a fee, like, you're going to tell me, like, what's the, until we know those sort of things, I, it's pretty hard to put. To put anything uh in place. I too like the citywide idea. But I would love our burn permit system, I have to say that getting that email that tells me that it's time to pay my ten bucks, I go on, I don't even think about it, I click the. Renew my permit thing, and if we have that same thing for a boat launch every single year for every single person that that comes and uses that launch. Uh, where they just, you know, it's that same system, it's automated reminder, we've done fantastically well uh with our burn permits, we've heard that so many times. Um, since we've implemented that system, I think that having a boat launch system that's very similar to that will make sense. Mr. Doby?
I'm just going to comment on the sign. I think the sign is. Will be the first step. But I think that uh. Make the sign like big enough that everybody can see it, just don't make a little public size. As far as. The survey and the collection. I'm just not going to comment on that, because if you guys have batted it around for three years and never come up with any idea in that yet. I I don't think I can help you on this one, because I'm like the mayor, it's going to be difficult to put into place and extremely difficult to police. We all need to get your heads together. Please come on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, I think the sign is great, other than, yeah, finishing the brush, and um, in terms of the permit, I like the idea of of. Having a one stop shopping kind of. Option for everybody. Um, so if they're coming out of town and now using it two, three times a year, they're paying whatever, twenty dollars or whatever you decide that fee is for them to launch their boats. Um, the residents who may use it more often. Who live here are still only paying that same amount of money. That's, you know, and because I think it would be very difficult to charge each time somebody puts their boat in the water. That you have here, you have to have somebody down there always talking to you. You know, I've seen it in in places like Windsor and that, where they do have an attendant down there. And you pay to launch your boat, park your vehicle, and whatever first amount of time, but unless you're willing to employ people to be down there, I don't know how you. Which was an option, do if you want to voice these.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I thought I had the big win by talking about the bilingual sign, so. Uh, anyways, I guess that's, who knows? Anyways, I do think we have, we have that for sure, was it third? You sure that? It is right here, I think that's one of my notes, anyway, so I I think that's an important actor, we have to make sure we do that. I also, speaking still about the sign, you know, I think it's a pretty important message that we talk about as well, the uh, the bottom part of that, that let's all work together so that we can continue. To enjoy this amazing, so I think that's should be bold, it should be really highlighted as well, because, you know, we are trying to figure out how we can, you know, work together so that we we don't have to be, you know. Uh, punitive, if you will, around the area, or or figure out how to do something differently, so that we can, uh, you know. Have have revenue generated, so that we can, they have staff, unfortunately, have to take care of the site on their own, or whatever other fact it is, we're out there, so. Uh, I think it's an important statement that we got to make sure this is getting sold to people, and it's to be clear, that that's that's the message we're trying to, uh, trying to help. Make sure we don't have to change things too drastically, so so please obey these rules. Um, I, you know, I I mean, I I think I said it before, previous as well, in all of our discussions, that, you know, uh, not a fan of parking, was to the deputy mayor's point, and then paying for parking, pardon me. Uh, is is not something I want, and uh, but, you know, if it's a reality, it's a reality, but I I do not want to see us necessarily do something. Uh, without knowing what the implication is going to be, so I, I mean, I personally think we need to get a baseline, so that we know, you know, next year, you know, when and if the numbers come down, that we, that we have, you know, we have some. To compare that to, because I I mean, I think it's not just a matter of revenue for for down there in the area, but I think it's also going to impact business and potentially, if we uh. If we put something in place that that does make people not want to go down to that area, or makes us not unique around the other, I know we talked about other ports around, or other uh, other boat launches have it. And and so maybe we get more traffic because we don't have, and so my concern is that we, that we mess up that, and it's like, then they'll go to Europe or wherever else, because. Now we're we're doing the same as everybody else is, so that that takes, you know, um, that they can then build a whole sort of, because there's no savings, but so. That's kind of my concerns on that, um, uh, but if we did have to do something, I mean, anything that's electronic, I don't want to have to put a machine down there, because it can end wise, and uh. And then as far as enforcement goes, I suspect that that's going to be what eats up the cost of the revenue we get from it anyways, so. But again, I don't know, because we don't have the data to support everyone. That's my thought, but anyways. So, uh, what do we need to do here? This is just for information as well, right? So discussion, so I don't think you got anything concise there, uh, yet, Mr. CEO.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I certainly have for the signage. It was, it was a official library. Some mechanism, but the township role role of that sign, and there's a potential to be. And there's the intention of the. If you go to West Canadian, maybe that, um, in. Bo- holding that, you know, working there. They certainly have not been back to the. City of Tarry, which is rest in respect to the Spanish. For the fear that. Other, and the others respect the survey. Most of me.
Sorry, I, you know, a little bit of will for the survey itself to me. So, sorry, I, I'm sorry. I should have said that, that I thought the survey was a good idea personally, as well as the whole one year that they're piloting out. But I mean, I think that's maybe a discussion that we should. We have to have, obviously, right? Continually. So, uh, you know, I, I guess, uh, from the perspective of purely the, uh, uh, the, the survey and weight versus the, uh. Uh, the, the paid now, I guess those are the two options on table that we're looking at. So, uh, we're going to look back to customer talent for, uh. Uh, your opinion on that. Where you want to go with it?
I do not see any issue at all. The survey, you know, we put it, we put on the website, even if nothing comes from it this year, the word is that, that, you know, you see it's looking at this and. At some point, there's going to be. You know, fees for parking down there. When we talk about fees, you know, comparing them to. The burn permits is great, but. There are always going to be people in it for cardinal with burn with a burn permit. We can't. Any, anything we implement that we have to police, there's always going to be people that just ignore it. If we say, hey, let's get a new this, ten percent of people ignore it, or we say, hey, we're going to do this. Thirty percent of people might actually do it, you know? Something is better than nothing. Unless nothing is nothing.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stan.
Why? I guess you can put up a survey of your life, uh, you, everybody's concerned about leasing it. Uh, my concern is why don't we send someone to other areas that we are the only boat ramp that doesn't charge? So how do the other communities, uh? Are these solutions? How, what kind of economics do they have to pay? Because I, and I'm a voter and I'm in water everywhere and it doesn't matter where I go, you got to pay it. So as for people coming, oh, I didn't bring my wallet. You don't need to go fishing along. You got your buddy with you. Let him pay for it. Somebody's got the wallet when you try to carry.
So on this side of the fact, for a survey, survey now and do later or do now you're going with?
Um, if you want to send the survey, it doesn't look like we're going to get it done. So then we'll just go with the survey and then. That happens.
All right.
Uh, yeah, yeah, not another one on the shelf. No, I'm not putting that on the shelf. I, I think you guys are missing them. First of all. Everyone else is. Runs it with, with their students. Okay, that's number one. Number two, we're looking at five dollars or less or whatever. We're going to put the survey on. And the people from Bancroft, I'm sure they're not going to go this week and look on the survey. They're on our website. See if they're going to charge. They're going to be down on their wall line. Um. They're, they have hundred thousand dollar boats. They don't have ten dollar boats. They have hundred thousand dollar bass boats. And a hundred fifty thousand dollar. Cuts. And they stay there three or four days at a time, some of them, maybe a week with their truck and car. Um. Somebody, I mean, somebody's got to give me a reason why we shouldn't charge, like, like a good reason, because, I mean, I don't mind. You don't want to charge people hundred thousand dollar boats. Then I like to put a motion through that all children that live in Edwardsburg Cardinal Township. Do not pay minor heart registration for self grandma next year.
Okay, well, you can put that through a motion.
So, I mean, you know, if you, if you, if you think we're nickel and diamond, you know, hundred thousand dollar boats. People, you, someone's got to go down there maybe, and I think be a good time necessary just to see. What it's like to be down there. Maybe from midnight on. And see, and you might get a better perspective of where we should be going. That's my thoughts. And like I said, I'm on pork. You don't want to charge hundred thousand dollar booking. Let's not charge your kids. Find them on.
Well, well, I echo some of those comments, um, maybe not the minor documents. Um, but I, but I certainly like. I'm not, I think if we want to give information and education, I'm not sure that it requires a survey. It requires a notice. We're going to start targeting. Asking somebody if we want to start targeting chair. I know what the answer is going to be.
No.
I mean. I, uh, and maybe I'd be surprised, but, but I think. But I think if somebody gave me, you know, a piece of information on my windshield that said. You know, your last free parking or your last free use of a boat launch. Then I got the information. I know that there's going to be a future fee implemented. If there's a survey on there that asks me if I think I should pay, I can tell you that it's going to be a different, a different. So, so for me, while I'm, you know, certainly supportive of data and information. I think I get the, the, the gist around the table that the group is very supportive of putting the fee in. For, for use of the boat launch. Um, I'm not really sure that I need more data to tell me that the people sport it, that, I mean. I don't remember doing a, a note, a notification fee when we didn't burn permit either. It got by law and we got put into place and we can't have a fire with their permit. So that's him. So I don't see. I don't see how asking the group. Is going to make a difference. I re- I really don't. I mean, it's, sometimes you got to make difficult choices. We were put here to, to make difficult choices and, and do things and. You know. Take the heat when the heat comes. And, I mean, I'm certainly, uh, willing to stand up and take my share of it for this. I want to continue. To invest in this area. I want to continue to make and grow and move this area better and something we're proud of. And to me, that comes in the user fee. We've heard everyone say that they can't use a boat launch around us without paying people. I mean, so why? I think maybe it makes perfect sense, but I, I don't understand. How a survey helps us come to that conclusion. We've already made the decision in my mind that we're going to charge. So let's inform people that we're going to charge. And when that charge is going to start. If that's not till next year, so be it. Um, but I don't think that surveying people is going to get us where, where we need to be. We've made the decision. Tell them it's going to charge and move on. Like we're down. Then it gives us a year to figure that. All right, Mr. Doby. I got no comment? Give them a say.
But I was just going to say, instead of surveying or asking, you know, educate. We are going to start charging. This is what we're going to start charging and this is what the money is going to go towards. Right? It's going to go towards maintaining. The boat launches is going to go towards, I don't know, maintaining the road that goes down to the boat launch. Or whenever the money is going to be used for, I would imagine it would be related to. For that, but. So I think it's more of people don't mind paying the fee when they know that their money is going towards something that's going to better. Their community or better the area that they're going to use. So I think if you take that approach, it would be taken. That. By the community.
Or is it true? Maybe, maybe I don't know. I, I took this, Mr. Mr.
With the, the mayor. But people know. Just like the sign we have, we're going to put up at the other end, but we'll put one up to the boat ramp that. As of such a second today, you'll be charged usable ramp and the money will be going towards whatever.
So, and, and it sounds like, um, you're in the swing position at this point in time anyway, so it would be your gate, I guess, would be this year or next.
I don't think it'd be this year, no. I mean, we're, we're just never.
We might have a test one.
End of the year, the senior first, you know. But we'll remember.
Okay, uh, I mean, I, I, I personally, I still think, you know, I, I'd like the data, but, uh, you know, it doesn't have to be this exact where it was ever. I don't have to have that, but, uh, you know, fair enough.
I would love to have that.
After, well, you're not going to get that. You're not going to know the before was, right? So, you know, we'll not know. My data would be sort of the second. We would not know what the beforehand looks like. We would not know what traffic we had before they did this. And then after we had that, to see if there wasn't back to drop because don't forget, it's not just affecting. People, the, the township dollars itself down at the port for revenues right down the, uh, at the, uh, Legion Way for, if the docks for the, for the township. But it's also affecting the businesses in the area who may get less traffic if in fact people say, you know what? Now that Edwards, Edwards were charging down there, I'm actually going to Morris, but very required with the rest. That's all. So we will not have that baseline data. Yes, they don't.
I have to, uh, just because I'm in a, I'm in the water every weekend. It's two, three times a week. I have people coming up there saying they can't believe that we don't manage it. And, uh. If you're going from airport coming there because it's free, you're going to fuel up an airport. Because their gas and distance keepers are about more. Or less rather, so. As, like, I use it constantly.
No, I, I mean, I realize that on the, on the idea of paying for parking a month, I'm losing interest and I'm okay with that. I'm just, you know. It is what it is. But so, you know, from a direction perspective, it sounds like, uh. Uh, we want to pick a date essentially. It's, you know, maybe it is January first next year for a sister. I don't. Uh, I, I, I think I take issue with paying for park because I don't, if I go down there and park, I'm not going to pay.
No.
Pay leaves the launch. So, so the inference that you're paying for parking is, isn't right. I can go down there and park my car and go for a walk and not pay. I think you're saying.
Well, no, it's a launch.
But, yeah, but if you were to go back. Three or four topics, tons you talked about this topic. We're talking about from stern to gadget all the way down past the Legion. We're talking about paying the parking down there. That was the original. That's kind of, we've now settled on, no, for vote also, which I guarantee we did. We went through this.
This year, those, those people can pay too, just as well, those.
People.
No, up at the fire and just give it back. That's not an issue. But people in.
Right, so I don't think, I don't think we have that solidified yet. But anyways, so. I think we have, sure, this has gotten clearer for you somehow, Mr. CEO. I think we have a long solidified. And I, I think that that's, that's clear, but I just want to be clear that it's not parking.
No.
Right, if, if you go down and you park there and you go fishing, that's, that's a different story than if you launch your boat. We're not talking about it, it's a boat. So, or the misunderstanding there, then, then that's not. I thought it was pretty clear that it was a fee to launch your boat, not a fee to, to park your car. That's, isn't that, I mean, like I said, that was that.
Yes, it doesn't.
Okay, no, I'm saying it doesn't matter. It's fine. If it's, if it's not a parking fee, that's fine. So you can still go to the Legion and not park your boat and, and not have to pay it is what I'm hearing. So that's fair. So, uh. Sounds like we should probably have a, uh, a decision like discussion at some point down the road on this one then. Unless you need something else, uh.
Do you share sugar with everything else? Next meeting.
So maybe at the next, you can see we'll have a discussion on what it could be. And timeline to start.
No, I'm sorry. Is the chair fully bidding to see if they want staff report?
I, I, I believe that's the ask. Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, the survey, uh, doesn't seem to have support. I don't think anyways, uh. Um. I think that the consensus around the table, uh, is that it's, it's not a if, but a when and, and how much, uh, if I'm not mistaken, and please. Anybody jump in if I'm not saying that correctly. So I think, uh. You know, it sounds like we should have a discussion on some of those details and try and hash that out at, at maybe the next meeting. That fair? Some reasonable? Okay, so I think that's our direction. Right. Okay. Uh, all right, so moving on to number seven then, inquiries, notices of motion. Mr. Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
Oh, yeah, sir. Um, uh, uh, do the chair to the CEO. I'm just wondering if you could get to, uh. Maybe Mr. Barrett's office. And ask him if he could help us out of getting a new sign down in our boat launch, uh, Canada Customs and. R M U Agency. You can't read it. I mean, it's an eyesore. We're trying to improve our, our downtown, our, our waterfront. We've got a, we've got an eyesore for assigned to the federal government. So. Wonder if we could. See what Mr. Barrett could do for us. Um, or maybe we can. I'm not there. Only the agency and ask them if they could put a new sign up for us.
We can serve.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, all right. Just do your, just now. Just try to. It's too dope. Set it up. Well, we're good. All right, and I don't have anything either then. Uh, all right. Moving on to number eight, which is question period. Uh, we, we still have our friends from, uh, from HB here in the, the audience. Uh, you have a question or?
No, we're just listening.
Good. I hope we're ready for you. When can we start? Um, I think we have an answer for that question just as we.
Eight minutes.
So thank you, thank you, our. Um, to enter into the forum, so. Well, and I think. They, they. And, uh, council will, um. Vote without a bylaw to, uh, introduce it, which will be the first floor. Um, but I came by myself and by, um, the mayor, um, of the council and then we were. She has figured it is. And. Um, the, um.
Will be still in this whole thing for a lighter.
Nothing I see any, I'm sorry, that many people are leaving, just outside of, I, um, basically really. When, um, after by last month, if the building, you know, have a vision. He's all over being for me with the.
What can you do, Nate? But one month for us. Um, and we're, we're working against time. And we want to get the, they. Finished recording for. So. There's some of you that. He does, he's not sure what part of them.
Yeah. Uh, sure, yeah, I was going to say there's something, but there's still something to do with the septic I thought first as well, but, uh. So do we, we, do we have, do they, so basically with the recommendation we passed tonight. Do we have a bylaw written then in advance? Is it ready to go? For that, like for me to sign and to, to execute? Or do you have to still write it? So it'll take some time. Time to do it. My suggestion was we're going to have a special meeting of council next Monday night at six. I don't think this is going to require further discussion. Uh. Or maybe I'm wrong in thinking that, um. I was going to make a suggestion, if it could be done for next Monday night, why not have it on there if it's just a simple, we had the discussion tonight, if it's a simple discussion. If it's not going to be a simple discussion. And then warrants a lot more discussion. Uh, but I didn't get the impression that, that it would. Um, and as long as the compliance is there, then, then. I don't want to make too much.
Oh, but, but sure, it's, um, I am speaking this. There's a lot of myself, so I, um, I can.
Don't do.
We're, we're, we're.
So. Potentially, we could see. So. Any other question? All right, uh, moving on to number nine then, closed session. Uh, Steve, there's none there. We'll move on past that. And so I need a. We'll have the deputy mayor seconded by the mayor. Uh, I'll favor. So it's good. I was going to get into three. You just put it forward.